Hey Danny.
Hey, I got a problem.
Okay.
I just got done up chucking my guts all over the bathroom, so.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, I know.
Better for us if I kind of do it and you say next slide.
Perfect, yeah, I'm comfortable with that, thank you.
Last time I gave co-rights or whatever, I demonstrated my lack of IT experience, so.
No, I'm comfortable with you driving and I'll just prompt the next slide. I'm gonna go offline now.
Okay.
Evening, Council.
Hello, Prez.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Ryan.
Hi, Gail.
Randy, you got a little bit of a freeze for a while from the snow.
Yeah, I hope that's the end of it.
Yeah, really.
Hope, hope is good, but I don't think so.
Nah, I think we probably got one more coming.
You can, you can let them know your secret why, Randy, how you, soon as you ordered that hundred tons of salt, or it was delivered, next thing you know, fifty degree weather.
Well, the reason we're gonna get more snow is because Jim wants it.
Yeah.
He's gonna get up out again.
There, there, I'm, I'm quite certain there's a battle of prayers going on upstairs.
I'm surprised that desire's gone on this long. If I had one season, he'd be done with it.
Hey, the next time at three o'clock in the morning, we start those big machines up, I'll come over and pick you up. You'll, you'll find out why.
Maybe I'll wait till we start recording this, but I want you to know, so, somebody said.
We are, we are recording, by the way.
We're on.
There's a forum.
We were the last to get plowed.
Yes, yes, we rotate the neighborhoods. You know, and it's not everyone first or everyone last on each snowstorm, so.
We all get to be first or last at one time, right?
That is correct.
Well, Julie, Julie's off tonight, correct?
Um, I have, I believe so. I left voicemails, um, on her home number and dropped off the packet, knocked on the door and didn't have a response. She might be down south.
Yeah, I, I thought she was, I didn't know if she'd jump on from New Orleans or. Well, we'll give it, we'll, we'll start at seven o'clock, so we'll give two minutes. Everybody also tend to get on.
There, there was, I will say, uh, that last snowstorm, which we got eight or ten inches, there was a one point one, neighborhood on their Facebook that thought they should be plowed out at by seven in the morning. And I tried to explain, I tried to explain that the priorities were the main, main streets, but.
Absolutely.
I, I should point on your way, Mr. Frisby, because I think we got their neighborhood about nine thirty or ten, and it was closer to noon for yours.
Yeah. I, I just thought that there was no favors being played. That was all right with us.
Yeah, no, it's strictly pretty rotated, either start up on Twenty Second Street and move south, or start down south and move north, so. If we start on the north side of the village, we get to you guys pretty quick. If we start on the south side, we get Mr. Holmes quicker.
And Gail.
If you live on a main drag, you don't have to worry about it.
That's true.
You, you get plowed in immediately.
Yeah, that's right. And when you have two entrances to your driveway, it's real interesting.
Hmm.
Well, it is seven o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call to order March first Village Council regular session. Thank you all for joining and being here. We'll do a, the Pledge of Allegiance first.
Okay.
I'll start off, I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
We'll take a moment of silence here, and when, Mr. Mallory, you ready if you do roll call, please?
Okay, and, whoop, let me, um, stop this, your screen here. Uh, roll call will be trustee Keller.
Here.
Trustee Wagner.
Here.
Trustee Holmes.
Here.
Trustee Reaster. Trustee Reaster.
And she, she said yes, but she's not being heard.
I'm not being heard?
No, yeah, turn up your volume. There you go, barely.
Oh, I don't know, I've never hit turn with that before.
Yeah, so we have trustee Reaster here, trustee Olson.
Uh, here.
President Frisby.
Here.
And trustee Merrill is excused.
All right, we've got a roll call, we've got an agenda in front of us. Trust everyone have the time to review it? And, uh, any additions or anyone would like to make it this time to it?
No, yes, well, staff, what we are going to, to add, uh, Julia giving a presentation on Michigan's new redistricting process, and that will be, uh, under scheduled appearance.
Yeah, so we've got the addition of, um, the M I C R D Commission. So if we take a roll call, if there's no other changes.
Uh, trustee Keller moved to approved agenda as revised or amended.
Trustee Wagner as a court. Trustee Keller on the motion with support from trustee Wagner. And roll call vote, also, um, I, I believe all the trustees are calling in from the village of Vicksburg, but if that is not accurate, if you can state that for the record after the roll call fall, I'd appreciate it. Uh, the roll call vote on the agenda is, uh, President Protep Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
President Frisby.
Yes. All right. We have an agenda in front of us. Uh, we'll, we'll jump over to the scheduled appearances and, uh, yeah, Jim and I got this email, um, from the end. Well, I don't know what the acronym is, the Independent Citizens Redistricting. Uh, I, we just thought it'd be a good idea just to hear, you know, to hear what's going on in our communities, try to be an input. If anybody wants to get involved in it, I think this is the time to do it. I mean, this is gonna affect all the districting and voter registrations in the state of Michigan, so. Without further ado, Ms. Claudia with Julia, excuse me.
Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Julianne Pastula. I serve as general counsel to the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission, also known as the M I C R C, and I reside in Wayne County, Michigan. I would like to recognize and thank President Frisby and the members of the village council for this opportunity to present public comments about the M I C R C, and thank you to Mr. Mallory as well for coordinating the presentation. Next slide, please. So in 2018, Michigan voters adopted a ballot initiative that shifted responsibility for redistricting from the legislature to the Michigan, to the M I C R C, to take responsibility for nonpartisan redistricting. The commission is comprised of thirteen randomly selected Michiganders, four identify as Democrat, four identify as Republican, and five are unaffiliated. I should note there were over nine thousand applications received by the Secretary of State's office that were, so, the thirteen commissioners were selected from. And the M I C R C is responsible for redistricting the congressional and Michigan legislative districts. My goodness. Next slide, please. To ensure, to ensure free, fair, and impartial maps, the M I C R C is required to solicit statewide public input and participation prior to drawing any redistricting plans. This will be achieved through a minimum of ten public hearings held throughout the state of Michigan, and I can say the commission is examining and holding, looking to hold more than ten meetings. Per the Michigan Constitution, the purpose for the public hearings is threefold: to inform the public about the process, to share the purpose and responsibilities of the commission, and lastly, to solicit information and feedback from the public about potential redistricting plans. Next slide, please. So to conclude, the M I C R C and staff, welcome your ideas, as well as the ideas of your residents, to increase awareness and engagement in the redistricting process. Please email us at redistricting@michigan.gov or mail any comments or questions or ideas to M I C R C, P O Box three zero three one eight, Lansing, Michigan, four eight nine oh nine. Share your comments at our weekly meetings during public comment, we meet every Thursday, or join us at one of our upcoming public hearings. That schedule will be posted on our website within the next few weeks. To learn more about the M I C R C or the public hearings, please visit our website at www.michigan.gov/micrc. And thank you again for this opportunity to speak to the village, the residents of the village of Vicksburg. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pastula. Does anyone have any questions they would like to ask while we have?
Uh, trustee Keller here, I'm just kinda curious, as far as redistricting, uh, does this need to be completed before the 2022 election cycle, or?
Yes, thank you, trustee Keller. That's an excellent question. Yes, this, the constitutional deadline to have the final maps adopted is November first of 2021. Unfortunately, uh, the delayed census data release is going to impact that date. Per the Michigan Constitution, we need to have a forty-five day public comment period, which would bring us to September seventeenth, uh, to have the maps published for, for public comment, and the census data is not expected to be released until September thirtieth. So there is going, there is, and Michigan is not unique in that, uh, fashion, there are, all states are redistricting this cycle, so that, that's being explored, but, but the commission is continuing its work and moving forward with its work while we're addressing those issues. But the goal, that was a very long answer of saying, yes, the anti, the anticipated use is for the election starting with the 2022 cycle.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Anyone else would like to ask or comment on? If not, thank you, Ms. Pastula. We appreciate it very much. I would encourage everybody to go to their website and take a look and get educated. Uh, you know, one of the things I learned over the weekend was, you know, our roles and responsibilities as council representatives of this community is to be educated. Yeah, uh, it, it was a good eye-opener for us. So thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Thank you very much for your time, President Frisby, and the village council as well, and I hope you enjoy your evening. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, Jim, do we have any other public officials hanging in the wings?
We, we do not. We do have six citizens as attendees with one of them being, uh, Mr. Ritzma representing the press, but no, uh, public officials.
All right, so we'll go into citizens' comments for agenda and non-agenda items. Each have four minutes to address the council and, uh, please state your phone name and your home address.
Yep, it, it appears that, uh, everyone is logged on from a computer-type device, so if you highlight the bottom, you will see a gold hand that underneath it says raised hands. You would click on that indicating you wish to speak for four minutes. If you are calling in from a phone, by dialing a phone number, you would hit star six, but I believe it's telling me everyone's on a computer dice. Again, if you move your cursor on the Zoom screen, you'll see the raised hand at the bottom of the screen and you click on that. We'll give it another thirty to forty-five seconds to see if anyone wishes to speak. And I do not see anyone, um, this is the one chance citizens have to speak on agenda or non-agenda items. Uh, one more time, if, just hit the raised hand icon at the bottom of the screen to indicate you'd wish to speak to the council. And Mr. Frisby, I do not see anyone that has indicated they wish to speak to the council.
All right, thank you, Jim. Uh, well, we have in front of us the general consent agenda. Uh, within it, there's a three requests for reserving the pavilion on the historic village grounds. Trust everyone's had an opportunity to review it and, um, if you have any comments or clarifications or discussion on it, or we've entertained a motion to approve.
That we, this is Gail Reaster, I will move that we approve the general consent agenda as presented.
Trustee Wagner, all support.
Trustee Reaster with the motion and trustee Wagner with the support. Hearing no conversations, uh, the roll call vote. Will be trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
President Protep Keller.
Yes.
President Frisby.
Yes. Thank you very much. Um, Jim, we have in front of us some council action items tonight, if you would go into that in detail, please.
Yes, let me see if I can, uh. Just gonna bring up, what we have in, in front of the council is, uh, council, the staff, uh, as well as, uh, village attorney Kurt McCammon, uh, proposed rules of procedure that we distributed to, to the council. Um, and this, uh, it is our recommendation, uh, under the best practice model, that we have a formal scope of, uh, rules of procedure, and then, under each new subsequent council, uh, after the elections, uh, our recommendation would be to, to review and approve those rules of procedure as well. So these rules would, would, would go until November of twenty twenty-two. And then, um, at that point, uh, with the seven people representing the village, uh, our recommendation would be to, to, to review and approve again. Uh, be happy to answer any questions, um, from council. It is, it, um, goes over, uh, council meetings, both special meetings adjourned and recessed work sessions, um, the attendance, uh, communication, uh, conduct at meetings, both from elected officials, staff, and participants, um, quite, uh, we feel in-depth, all-encompassing, does set the, uh, meetings, what they should consist of, fifteen different points, and then talks about each one of those points, uh, also has, uh, formality in the motions in that documented, so I'll pause there.
Yeah, Jim, just one question.
Sure.
Uh, after this gets approved, is it going to be posted to the public so that, uh, like those rules and operations will be available for anyone who wants to attend the meetings?
Yes, that's our intention. Once, uh, if approval is gained, we'll have it up on the website, and it'll be a document that can be reviewed by everyone.
I know it's a big document, there's a lot of reading. I, I made a stab at it three times to get through it. But, uh, as I said earlier, you know, that's our obligation to the community as being council members is to read and review and to understand things. I know we're not lawyers, but, uh, you know, this has been vetted pretty well. Our legal team looked at it and helped us create it, helped Jim and the staff create it. It can, it can be changed, it can be revised, and of course, we have to go through the parliamentary procedures to do that, and it, which is called out within the, uh, rules of procedure.
Uh, President Frisby, I have just one question. I, I don't understand, under, um, the privileged motions, I've never heard, uh, the number three, it says question of privilege. Could somebody explain that, please, to me?
I just need to.
It would be page eight.
I saw, it's under the motions, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
The, again, the privileged motion, it would be, um, your, uh, a motion that would set precedence over other motions. So to give an example, we had a motion and a, in a second to approve the agenda. And at that point, um, let's, uh, using a real-time example tonight, I forgot to add, uh, add the red, the representative who spoke on behalf of the state of Michigan. I, or really another trustee, this would be, could state, I have a, a question of privilege of motion that would take precedent over the motion on the floor. So then the question in that example I'm providing would be, I, I believe before this motion is voted on, we need to add the state of Michigan under public, uh, uh, appearance.
Thank you, thank you. I, that, I, that helps, thank you.
The, now those motions still require support, um, to, to be heard, conversation, and then ultimately a majority vote of the council to move into that. Uh, but the main is, uh, two that you see most used would, would be in, uh, the adjournment and recess of a meeting.
Sure, those I understand. I just did not understand the question of privilege, so thank you.
No problem.
Very good questions, Ms. Gail.
Well, I wanna know, and the only way I can find out is by asking.
Yeah, and I've got one comment. I really like, uh, the section O about public comments, the clarification around that structure and the.
Yeah.
Uh, just the way that it's supposed to be handled and conducted. Um, a really big fan of thanking people for their comments and their time and moving to the next individual that would like to speak.
I thought that was very good, too.
Any other comments or questions or discussion? Everybody is comfortable, uh, with what they have in front of us, what the staff has prepared for us?
It was very well thought through.
Uh, just one more comment. Uh, I, I would ask, staff, is it expected that, so as this would be updated in that process, um, kind of like a change log or a revision list as it gets thrown or put up to the council next with any revisions? That way we can compare the previous version to the current version or what was changed specifically, because it is a longer document.
Correct. If, uh, there's something changed, um, it would just be a revision on the last page, probably the bottom-left section revised on this date.
Okay, thank you.
The only revisions, just so staff and the public are aware, would be revisions that went in front of the council and were voted on. Staff will not be making any independent revisions.
Case in point, just so Renner stands, say with the public comment, right now, we, we have one four-minute section. We, we've, we've moved to that. Yeah, so that, that's formalizing what we've already done. Right, but four years from now, a council may decide that they wanna go back to two, three-minute sections, so that would be a revision. That's, so. Yeah, so it, it gives us the ability to have one central document that covers all of our rules of order and process instead of individual motions and ordinance and, and other resolutions. Right.
Yes.
Well said, thank you, Carl.
Well, it is something we would like to, uh, entertain a motion on to, uh, make it rules of our order for the council and the staff.
Uh, trustee Wagner. Go ahead, Carl. Oh, you got it. All right, uh, trustee Wagner, I move that we adopt the Village of Vicksburg Council Rules of Procedure as submitted. Trustee Keller, support.
Trustee Wagner with the motion and the support, uh, President Protep Keller. Hearing no further, uh, conversation, we'll go ahead with a roll call vote. Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
President Protep Keller.
Yes.
President Frisby.
Yes. So moved.
The next item is, uh, will be our fourth or fifth year, at least fourth year, uh, rever, it's a resolution for the, um, goose roundup uh, on Sunset Lake, and we feel it's had a positive impact. If, uh, you do remember, in the summer of two thousand and seventeen, uh, we unfortunately had to shut down Sunset Lake Beach for a time period, uh, due to the testing uh, results of, uh, of, of the water. Uh, we looked at an all-encompassing plan. Uh, DPW continues to implement that plan, uh, by, uh, quite frequent cleanups of the beach and that, but one of the key things we thought we were successful in was the annual goose roundup, which is, as well now, um, moved to, uh, the addition of, uh, capturing eggs. And then, uh, the company, and it's all overseen by the state of Michigan, uh, repopulates the eggs in the, uh, goose, geese, um, to another location in the state of Michigan. So, um, this will be the second year, uh, that the eggs are collected as well. So it's our standard resolution that the state requires. We submit it to the company that, again, it's just, uh, the documentation that it has gone in front of the elected body and in agreement with it. Um, and it is a live capture. The animals are, are just, uh, uh, placed in new homes in another location in the state of Michigan, so.
Any questions or discussions of any, anyone? No, hearing none. Mr. Mallory would take a roll call on it.
Uh, point of order, we need a motion.
Make a motion.
Trustee Keller, I make a motion that we, we approve the resolution for the annual goose roundup and egg collection for Sunset Lake.
Reaster's second.
President Protep Keller with the motion, supported by trustee Reaster. If I hear no, uh, further conversation, we will take a roll call. Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
President Protep Keller.
Yes.
President Frisby.
Yes.
Okay, and.
That takes us to the village manager report. I think you've got a couple items on the infrastructure update, and, uh, the schedule for the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, and I thank you very, very much for putting together that outlined schedule, and it gives us, each one of us, an idea what to expect at our next meetings through the budget process, because as we all know, they can get pretty in-depth and pretty long, so this gives us an idea before we start what's, what's in front of us, so, thank you, Jim.
Yeah, thank you. Um, well, on the infrastructure, and I'll bring up that, uh, scheduled document, I'll screen share it on the next point, but, uh, it actually, with the good weather that we're experiencing for this time of year, uh, that project has begun over on Spruce Street. Uh, millings have started, people will see, uh, we, we worked with the contractor to bring in all the heavy equipment needed on the project that's being stored on the grounds, uh, of the village, uh, out at the historic village. Uh, we communicated that with the Historical Society, is all the heavy equipment. We communicated that with the historical society is all the heavy equipment is down by the pavilion and won't interfere with the operations at the depot or anything. But all of the equipment needed is is on site. And it will now progress five to six days a week for the next several months to do this project that we began in fall of two thousand and sixteen, going through the process to get in place. Again, you see updates through our social media and website. We encourage citizens to go to our website and at the bottom, and I can certainly ask Ellie Lee to explain the process to input their email address because then anything we post, they would be pushed out an email on in regards. And as we approach Prairie Street, that's probably still some time off, we'll be having more frequent contact, especially with our downtown business owners and building owners as it progresses through the big. We're asking our public to honor the road closures. We do have access open for the businesses and residents. But if others can find alternative means of travel, it would certainly help this project. And the one street closure for sure that will be closed down is Washington Street. I believe from Mills to Michigan Avenue that that's going to have pretty restricted travel as the project begins there as well. So I'll pause, be happy to answer any questions on on the project that the council might have. And then go ahead on the next topic, the. So we're sitting at March first. So so the council and public are aware internally, we'll have meetings to finalize the different department leaders input on needs, wants and wishes for their respective departments within the village, that being the police and DPW. We had at our Parks and Rec meeting indicated that be a discussion on the needs, wants and wishes. All of our council and Planning Commission, Parks and Rec and other government people here in the village of Vicksburg will be receiving an email from me this week to schedule one on one meetings for input on the budget process and priorities. Paralleling that will be Mr. Lee making contact with business and building owners, getting their input on on their priorities and desires. We have hope to have all of that completed by April twenty second. And as you can see, we'll we'll then be really into the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two fiscal year presentations. We have the April twenty six, both me and Mr. Lee will provide our input that we have put together over the that six, seven weeks of contacting individuals, but certainly the conversation at the council level, both on the twenty sixth and May third, to have facilitated conversations, reference the budget, reference our master plan that governs us in in the direction we're moving currently and in have a a public discussion. We'll also be encouraging our citizens to to become part of that participation during those meetings and and before. And then after May third, we will enter into what in the past four years, each department will present individually and move forward if and will still at that time take counsel input on on those policy decisions related to the budget, hopefully covering all topics up until June twenty eighth, when the formal budget is presented and a resolution of adoption. So I'll pause there, be happy to answer any type of questions that the council might have.
Well, I appreciate you looking at this, Jim strategically and breaking them out over the the course of time. And not just, you know, going through them all, you know, one, one night or two nights. So I appreciate the thought process and how you've laid this out.
We will, and it's not on here. I have sent an email. We will have to have an annual Brownfield meeting, which actually will incorporate swearing in Mr. Wagner and Mr. Olson as Brownfield members. But we'll have Jared Belka as part of that presentation as well. I've asked him what works best, April twenty sixth, May third or May seventeenth for that work session. We believe it would be a six thirty work session unless we would identify a second type of topic we might want to cover. But so that that's something that's not on this paper that we're just waiting for responses from him on. And go ahead and stop this. And Mr. Lee, if I can put you on the spot, I know that a person can go to our website and input their email address. But if you can explain that, I'd certainly appreciate it. And I think the citizens who are here tonight or watch a video in the future.
Right, certainly. It is the simplest computer interaction you will have. Visit our website down toward the bottom of the front page. There's a box that says stay connected. Click you put in your name and your email address. All the work after that is on me.
Here we go. Let's put a good test to to the workload of Mr. Lee then, so. And that also, that's a way that citizens, I mean, that not only will involve our communication on infrastructure, but anything that we post up on social media or our website gets kicked out to that email distribution list. So so it's a good way to stay connected to local government.
Well, very good. And any no more discussions or questions? In that regard, I guess we jump over to committee reports. Was it? Was that it for you, Jim?
Yes, yes, sir, it is.
Thank you. And Mr. Olson's got a couple of committee reports.
Thank you, President Frisbee. I had a conversation with Chief McMillan before we went live tonight. And Scott, I know you're on on here and hopefully you can hear hear me. He had nothing but praise today. We had a full cardiac arrest incident off of Twenty Second Street. Vicksburg Police Department did respond to that call. And Chief McMillan praised Vicksburg PD for their assistance. Both departments worked very well together, and he says thanks to everyone who was involved in that. So.
Danny, on that note, can I say one, one thing? I would, I think it's a good reminder. Probably two weeks ago, I was in a conversation with the medical director of Kalamazoo County, Dr. Fales. Vicksburg Police Department is one of the very, very few police departments in the state of Michigan that we have sent all of our officers to become medical first responders. So any medical emergency in this village, they not only respond to but are trained to address as medical first responders. So so I think that's noteworthy of a service provided to the village residents by our police department. And thank you, Mr. Olson, for letting me jump in there.
South County Fire Authority, they're they have finally approved their their budget. Tracy Losi made presentations to Schoolcraft Village and Schoolcraft Township, both because some of them have new members and needed to be brought up to speed on that. The big one that you're going to want to all know about is the Frontier Motel. It's been held up because of paperwork isn't there on the asbestos removal. That has been inspected. It has been approved. It's just a matter of getting the paperwork from the owner to Chief McMillan. As soon as that happens, we're going to move on a lot faster. The chief is has to then coordinate with County County Sheriff's Department, M dot Schoolcraft Police, other agencies and several other fire departments that are going to be brought in to help burn this hotel. This is not going to be a one day event. It's going to be a weekend event. So people from the the village, such as council, the board members for South County Fire Authority will be invited to do a gathering there. And I don't know, we could do a buffet. I I suggested a raffle where we could, you know, try for a chance to throw a flare in or whatever. But he wants to have the burn by the end of April, so we can still take advantage of the wet weather, possibly even having snow on the ground. I know that a few years ago, the last weekend in April, we had four inches of snow. So that we have to take a look at that possibility. And it's all just for safety. One thirty one speed limit, probably going to have to be cut down to thirty to thirty five mile an hour. So because of that, we're going to have gawkers. We may have to do detours off of one thirty one. That's all a possibility. So that's my report for South County Fire Authority.
Thank you, Danny. Do you have a CATS report also?
Yes, we had a CATS meeting this last week. If you did not know, you will soon know that as of this morning, the weight restrictions went into effect. So you will see the signs on the side roads. I know that there's one out here on V Avenue as I'm coming into the village. Kalamazoo County Sheriff's Department has taken over security at the Bus Depot train station downtown. It was getting pretty bad down there, I guess, at times. And a lot of fights, stuff like that. So the County Sheriff's Department has now stepped in and taken over the security for that building. Shuttle buses to outlying areas to to Vicksburg, Schoolcraft, the other outlying areas, and even up to including the VA in Battle Creek. CATS supplied ninety four thousand trips just last year alone, but that's down by forty five percent because of COVID. So they are getting COVID money in. So far, they've been awarded one point three million dollars. One of the big things that we're all gonna want to know about is obviously Portage Road. Portage Road is going to become a major construction area for the next two years. So I suggest if you have to go to Kalamazoo, you either take Sprinkle or else Lover's Lane because if you go up Portage right now, by ninety four, you will see some of the construction beginning. The bridge, everything is going to be replaced. It's basically going to become like Southwest Interchange at ninety four.
When does that start, Danny?
While they've already started the preliminary stuff right now. This is going to be a two year project. So I'd say probably by June, we're going to be in full swing. It's going to cost just to to redo ninety four between Lover's Lane and say Sprinkle beyond Sprinkle. It's going to be like five point four million dollars. And that's not even even including the interchange. They they cannot replace the bridge as per se, like they've done some of the other ones, simply because of factors of the cranes that would need to be used are so tall, they would interfere with the flight patterns of the airplanes. Now, that's pretty bad. Yeah. So they're going to, that's going to be going on. They're also going to repave, resurface Portage Road from downtown Kalamazoo to Alcott. So that's going to be down to one lane. It was bad enough last year and around the Lake Street area. And so it's going to be Portage Road is not going to be pretty to to work on. Bank Street is being realigned. The farmer's market is going to be transferred from the Bank Street Farmers' Area out to Mayor Mayor's Riverfront Stadium this year, which is going to be a big change. But they're doing a two year project of rebuilding Bank Street and the farmer's market. So that's going to be slight inconvenience. There is a M dot open house coming up in March on the I ninety four Portage Road construction. Once again, it's a two year project, and they're going to totally take out the Kilgore Road Bridge. So Kilgore Road is going to dead end right at ninety four. So it's going to be a pain, but we've gone through it before with Sprinkle Road and Oakland Drive and Lover's Lane, and it's just, it's just something that has to be addressed and and be done now. So that's it for CATS. I hope it was informative.
Thank you.
No, Danny, thank you very much. It was very, very informative. And here's one of the drawbacks of having a citizen council when we're all employed. President Pro Temp Keller had a meeting with some customers he could not get out of. I was, my company was switching over their computers to a new domain. And I was down totally, totally out of pocket for most of the week last week. So I don't think any of us were able to attend. I think Mr. Mallory was going to reach out to to see if he could get an update. I don't know if you were successful in that.
I I didn't get a response, so we'll have an update at the next meeting for sure.
Yeah, just so the council knows, I do apologize. I I was informed, as President Frisbee said, that that board meets on the fourth Tuesday of the month at nine thirty in the morning. And in 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 a normal world, being an outside sales rep, I could I could make those meetings. I could schedule, you know, juggle my schedule around. Unfortunately, due to COVID, I'm I'm kind of grounded in my office. So and I informed them of that meeting in January because I I just told them my employer was letting me take time out to do that meeting, but I I wasn't going to abuse that that generosity that they were they were doing. And I'm still, I'm doing two jobs right now, basically. So when a customer or client calls and said, hey, I need you to come look at a project, I had to go. So I did inform.
That's understandable, Carl.
Right, so. Yeah, usually I usually I get a copy of the minutes and I have not seen them yet. So I I probably will see them here shortly. And so hopefully next.
We have backups. And I thought for sure I could jump in there and cover it. And Jim thought he'd have time to cover it, and we just all got got going our own our own different ways. So as long as we're taking care of our our homework here for the village, we're we're staying on top of it.
And and just so the council knows, at at some point, we may, and we can have this discussion down the road, but we may want to look at at our participation on that board, long range. Because we're obviously have our own projects we have going on that will or will not, will or will not interact with what South County is trying to do. So that that's discussion for another day, but just we should kind of keep it on our radar at least to have a talk.
Yeah, thank you, Carl. Well, we thought it'd be a fairly efficient meeting tonight. It has been. So we're down to our time here. If there's, this would be the time any any of the trustees have comments, motions, discussions you want to have. Now's the time to do it. So we end it. We'll start with back with Mr. Keller.
I'm good. Thank you. I've talked enough.
Thank you, Carl. Reaster.
I'm great.
Mr. Holmes.
I'm good.
Mr. Wagner.
I do have a few comments. Thank you, President Frisbee. Took the opportunity to join into that first advisory call for the I believe it's the County Housing Administration that Mary Balcom is heading up, and they're going to be working on the funding for the village that was passed on the last ballot initiative. So they're going to be acquiring millions of dollars to put into projects for affordable housing in the Kalamazoo County area. And after that first meeting, I thought it's it's really great and interesting to see all the feedback the county is receiving. And I think that's going to be a really great project. Hopefully, if it's continuing the direction that they're receiving the feedback and it's administered correctly, I think that could be a tremendous benefit to the underserved and most endangered members of our community. So I think that's really cool. That's a great program to follow along with. Also, I had the opportunity to attend this weekend, the MML's Core Weekender. So that was a fun six hour, two day course. Really went over in depth, a lot of zoning ordinance, planning, best practices. And I think I don't want to speak for Tim, but there was a few takeaways that we definitely grabbed that we're doing really well in the village on, and there's still a few things to improve on. But I think we've definitely got the team to do it. A lot of focus on master plan, community involvement, and then really achieving the objectives that we set for ourselves and hold ourselves accountable. I think that's going to be our core strength coming up. So thank you to the staff for your diligence on that. Really, other than that, I think that was about it for me. Really, other than that, I think that was about it for me. But there was a great class. I would really encourage, like Tim said, everyone to stay educated, educate yourselves, do the best that we can for our community and for our citizens. The courses like that with the MML are very easy format, easy to digest, and really relatable when you've got a lot of municipalities across the state talking to each other. So I think it was a wonderful course.
Thank you, Ryan. Mr. Olson?
One last thing, it's just I stopped by Spruce Street today and was impressed with how fast they got their project going. So they really were going to town on it. So hopefully, we can get this thing knocked off quick.
Famous last words.
Yeah.
But I it is interesting, though, and and we, like I said, the last week, the last meeting with the communication part of it. I still had two people this weekend ask me what was going on at Spruce Street. You know, you don't it is to answer them, you know, diligently and honestly and openly and no question, how come they haven't heard about it? So we'll have a lot of people that that don't know about it. You know, we're all we're all deeply engaged here, and we know every step what's going on, but there's a lot of people out there yet that don't. So I didn't just encourage to to talk with them. If you then direct them towards Alex or the staff for sure. And I just wanted to go on, on, you know, to Ryan Wagner's comments about the Core Weekender. Wow, what a what a eye opener, you know, and we had a gentleman speak, Bob Slattery. And he was a past president, and this guy is phenomenal. He opened up my eyes to a lot of what I don't know. And, you know, I I I say this before I look to Carl Keller, because he's got the education and the background in it, but you know, as citizen representatives for this community, there's just too much I don't know. And it's a little intimidating. So I think going through and getting through the budget process, I'm going to work with the staff. You know, we've got some other ideas that you we've obviously talked about prior to this about doing some offsite training, but I think we're going to delve into it a little deeper and and get the MML to do some presentations, some interaction work, work sessions with us, and some of the study sessions. And the one thing we really, really owe our citizens is the knowledge of our charter. You know, that to me right now is my weakest point. Be our strength, all of us. So we we need to get together. We need to go through that, whether we have to sit there and read it together. But we all need to read it, understand it and live it. And I don't have to talk about those, what they stressed about is the integrity point of it, you know. I think why we all have a lot of solid individuals. We have, I think, one of the best groups I've ever seen on the on the council here, but you know, we just have to be consistent in our message, honest to the citizens and be responsible, you know, for what we say and what we do. So with that, I was really excited, you know, going into it. It was kind of a a goat rodeo at first when we we went off into these breakaway sessions to meet each other. And the first one was pretty cool. There was four of us. And then it threw us into another meeting, and I saw Ryan in there and thirty six other people, and we had four minutes to talk. Well, this ain't going to work. And it it worked itself out in the end, but you know, we're all living that new Zoom life and the webinar life. So it was interesting, but it was very, very, very informative. So I really, I know I encouraged you before, but there's a lot of that, that's it's inexpensive for us as a community. A lot of educational opportunities for us there. And, you know, for some of us, you know, going back and getting credit hours, you know, continuing education credit hours is it's a great thing. So I just, I don't want to pontificate on that too much, but it was a really good session and opened up my eyes quite a bit to what we're doing right. I mean, all we heard was, oh, is me and whoa, the trouble our communities are in. And and I was, I'm just typing about how great we are, you know, and nobody responded to me. So I stopped doing that. I think they didn't want you know, I was kind of bolstering the village, but it's a it's an amazing position we find ourselves in here as a community because we're really doing well as compared to a lot of other communities that are seriously struggling. You know, they have these discussions, groups and planning that the biggest thing is that he's pointed out is is the planning, setting goals, budget, levying taxes. That's our charter. That's what we do. That's what, as a council, we're in charge of. Of course, land use and zoning and policy. But some of them don't even talk about it. Why? They say, why have a discussion? We're broke. You know, why do we plan what we're going to do in five years? You know, that's a little negative attitude, you know, even though if you don't have money today, you got to plan, you got to have set goals. So I I appreciate the staff and Mr. Mallory and and leading us down that road. So to the end, I don't have anything more. And I see anybody else that's looking to jump in, so I will adjourn this meeting tonight.
Point of order, trustee Keller moved to adjourn. We just passed it. We got to do this.
Sir? That's what I said. I'm counting on you.
Trustee Wagner, I'll support.
Trustee Keller with the motion and trustee Wagner with the with the support to adjourn the meeting. And we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. Trustee Reister?
Yes.
Trustee Holmes?
Yes.
Trustee Olson?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
President Pro Temp Keller?
Yes.
President Frisbee?
Yes, and good night.
And Jeff, Jeff will stick on for you.
So.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
See ya.